Okay, good evening, everyone. Go ahead and reconvene the special meeting of Folsom City Council for Tuesday, February 14th, 2017. Any final action to report out of closed session, Mr. City Attorney?
No final action, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. So with that, we will adjourn the special meeting of Folsom City Council and call to order the regular meeting of Folsom City Council for Valentine's Day, Tuesday, February 14th, 2017. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Council members Miklos.
Here.
Sheldon.
Here.
Gaylord.
Here.
Howell.
Here.
And Morn.
Here. And would everyone please rise and join me in the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first, is any notice of any agenda updates, Mr. City Attorney?
None tonight, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, so the agenda will stand as published. So with that, next item, please.
Mr. Mayor, your first item tonight is scheduled presentation. It is a presentation from Sacramento County Regional Sanitation District regarding their five-year rate plan.
Good evening, Bacher. And I didn't know if was Marcus gonna introduce for Bacher? Is Marcus here? There's Marcus. I didn't know if you wanted the honor and privilege of introducing for Bacher, but I can go ahead and do that as well. So, so, Purbakar is the district engineer for the Sacramento Regional Sanitation District, and thanks for stopping by and sharing some information with us, Purbakar.
Oh, thank you, Mayor Morn. Good evening, and good evening, Vice Mayor and our favorite sewer nerd. Who used to be on our board, was there on our board for a long time. We miss her.
I'll be back at some point.
Oh, I'm sure you will be. If we keep Mayor Morn out of the parking lot more than once, then I'm sure he would want to delegate it back to you. Unfortunately, last board meeting, he wasn't able to get the parking spot. It was very tied up. I'm here this evening to update you on the rate increases that are coming up from Regional San and also get your feedback. We have a hearing coming up in March at our board, and we're collecting comments from a number of city councils, as well as the public meetings. So I'll go through those things and the purpose of those rate adjustments, and then get your comments. Quickly, I'll highlight the service in terms of, it's confusing, we have two different service providers. It's not often that people know who provides what, and so I'll just, for the benefit of the members that probably don't know, and also the audience, I'll just briefly mention, and why we're increasing the rates and what we're planning going forward. And also, there's a protest process in the public hearing. Just a couple of pictures that I put out there, these are shots at the current treatment plant. This regional plant was, actually Regional San was formed in early 70s. City of Folsom is the founding member, along with City of Sacramento, as well as the County of Sacramento, got together and wanted to regionalize the wastewater treatment. Back in those days, we used to have 22 different treatment plants, serving this region, all, some of them discharging to American River, some into Sacramento River, some are on the land, and so forth. The federal government came up with the big grant. At the time when this district was formed, this was one of the largest, if not the largest districts in the nation, and also received about half a billion dollars' worth of grants. So that facility was built with the grant at the time. Unfortunately, there's no more grant money left, but there's some good news at the end I'll share with you. Service area, we serve approximately 1.4 million people, all the way from Folsom to the east, north to the airport, west to Sacramento, and south to Elgro. We also provide service to the communities of Cortland and Walla Grove, down in the Delta that pumped up. So all of the water comes to that yellow spot where the treatment plant is. 3,200 acres. The board members that were in the time, in early 70s, had the foresight in going out and getting the land. Nobody would have thought that we would have homes looking over our fence line, fast forward 35 years from that point. But it was a wise decision. We benefit from that every day. And it's operated 24/7. There's always people there, and it judges wastewater. When we treat it, it goes into Sacramento River. If you're looking at the, that's the Sacramento River. So the water gets treated and then kind of goes out, and that's where we discharge to. As I was mentioning, there are two different sewer bills that folks get on their bill. We have collection agencies that, Regional San is essentially what you call a wholesaler. There are four collection agencies that collect sewage from homes and deliver to Regional San. In the instance of City of Folsom, City of Folsom provides its own collection agency, except a small sliver by the auto mall, which is where Sacramento Sewer District provides the service. I serve in the same capacity with the Sacramento Sewer District as I am with the Regional San. And the other two collection agencies besides the Sewer District or the City of Sacramento and the City of West Sacramento. So Regional San, as with most businesses, and especially when we're treating the wastewater, it's a very highly regulated business, and we have a treatment permit every five years. And back in 2010, we had a permit that required us to do a lot more than what we were doing at the time. It requires us to remove ammonia, as well as filter our wastewater. Ammonia is in human waste. There's not a whole lot humans can do not to have ammonia, other than for us to go ahead and take care of it at the treatment plant. It's a costly proposition, and we actually argued in terms of the merits of it, whether it was the right thing to do or not. It went on for years, and finally, we settled on going ahead and doing it, and...
Well, I don't know that settling, settling to do that. It was mandated by...
The state.
The State.
That's right.
Water Resources Control Board.
Yeah, we...
We fought it for close to 10 years.
That's right. It's 2010 is when, and then so they required us to finish the project by 2021, and we sued, we got a couple of years of, you know, break in terms of 2023 is when we got to finish certain elements by. The total cost is estimated to be between $1.5 to $2.1 billion. Right now, it's running about $1.8 billion. It has to be, like I said, fully operational. There are two elements to it, the ammonia removal and the filtration. Ammonia removal has to be complete and in place by 2021, and the filtration has to be complete by 2023. And the project today is under budget and on schedule. And just some of the highlights are there. You have a lot of these basins that are being converted to support the new treatment process. Oh, let me back up, I think it went a little bit quicker. So just to give you a size of this, this is roughly about 1,000 acres, what you're looking at. That, I'm just going to draw a little boundary with this, that is approximately 16 football fields, the size. That's where the new biological nutrient process that removes ammonia is going to be in, put in. That is the heart. So this is the existing heart, that little white square. We're going to replace that white square with this big heart, and that would have to be in operation by 2021. And we think we're gonna start the operation about 2019 and kind of test it and put it in service. How are we keeping our customers informed? One of which is to send letters in the fall to ratepayers and describes the project progress and so forth. And we also do some advertising and whatnot. We're trying to keep the rates as low as possible. Back when the permit was issued, we thought the project would cost about $2.6, $2.7 billion, which would lead to our rates being in the $62 a month range by 2021. We did the pilot study, and we were able to really streamline the technologies and select the right technologies, and it helped us to bring the cost down to about $50 in 2014. And then we also litigated with the state, and we were able to reduce some of the requirements, and that saved us over $100 million, as that litigation helped save. And then, last but not least, this is the closest to the grant, the $1.6 billion loan. This is the largest low-interest loan in the nation, and we get calls from even from Middle East, Middle East to, you know, in terms of Midwest and so forth, not Middle East, in terms of, you know, how we get the...
Chicago, as opposed to Saudi Arabia.
No, no. They have more money than we do, so I don't think we need to help them out there. So this loan saves us over half a billion dollars in interest costs, the life of the loan. That alone is responsible for keeping the rates $7 a month lower than what they would have been. That's just, that's alone. So we're also working on cost controls and whatnot, and all of those efforts are full bore. So we are expecting our rates to be in 2021 by $39. $39, that's what we're asking for the rate increases. Now, we do a 10-year financial plan. If things go as well as we think they would go, we will actually cap at 39, and the next rate increase would be after 2025. That's what our projections are. So there'll be a period where it's frozen, we won't be needing any rate increases after that point. So this is a schedule for rate increases, starting at July 1st, '17. The first three years, a dollar a year for the next three years, and then a 50 cents per month in the following two years, bringing up to 2021. And how are we notifying folks of presentations like this, as I said earlier on? And then also, we held a public meeting here. We also did the same meeting, we did a, you know, there was, there weren't that many people coming in, but we have to assume that they're happy with our notifications and so forth. That's why they didn't come in. There's also just one thing I wanted to point to you. We, Regional San has a low-income assistance program. We spend about $2 million a year to help ratepayers that are with a family of four that's below twice the federal poverty level. They are eligible for $150 a year discount. So that program, we used to be $100, and last year, we increased that to $150. So if anybody wants that, they can take, you know, assistance from Regional San. The hearing is on March 8th, which is one our board will consider. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Well, first of all, make sure I find parking at that meeting, okay?
I will make sure that I have some guard out there looking for you.
But, but, thanks for coming out. Purbakar and his staff sent out notices months ago, offering to come out and kind of share this information with the community, and we appreciate you coming out at our invitation. And again, they've, as Carrie knows from her years of service on the Regional San Board and my months lately, they have done an incredible amount of work to try and continually manage this into less and less expense. And Purbakar went over some of those, some of those ways that they did that. So, so, you know, my thanks to your efforts, you never liked to see rate increases, but I remember when those mandates were first calculated out, and you were in that 60, you know, I think even higher...
We had gone as high as 67, at one point.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Projections were...
So anyway, thanks for all your diligence. Are any questions, comments?
Yeah, I just, I just want to thank Purbakar again for coming out, and I want, we actually have more people here tonight than I thought we would have, but I am gonna be a sewer nerd. And I served on the board for many, many years, and it was very, very difficult. We had a lot of public meetings, we had lots of discussions in advance of that 2020, excuse me, the 2010 decision by the State Water Resources Control Board, because we were looking at something that we thought was gonna be approaching a $3 billion project, and the plant was being forced to do things to present, to eliminate the possibility of problems that don't even exist. To this day, they still don't exist, that's filtration. You have a higher probability of picking up E. coli in Folsom Lake than you do at the outfall coming out of the plant. But, so that's also a significant expense. But the board members and all of the people in the region worked very, very hard, as did Regional San's staff. The staff recommended that they move forward with pilot studies so that they could evaluate all of the variable technologies that were available to use in the plant upgrades, and that, right from the get-go, saved something approaching a billion dollars on the project cost.
Overall, in the end, that's what ended it.
Right. So they, there's been a lot of hard work, there's been a lot of public meetings, and, you know, this is just carrying it forward now that we can sort of see the light at the end of the construction time period. So, great work out there.
Thank you, appreciate your support.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions?
Yeah, quick question. What's the, and thank you very much for all the information. What's the approach as far as social media? I mean, 91% of all of information is digital and usually gathered mobily, so what's the, what's your outlook on that?
So we have, I'm gonna have Claudia come up too. Claudia is our Public Affairs Manager. We are present on the Facebook. We have our website, there's a lot of stuff that goes on our website. And also, the first time in Regional San's history, we did a Facebook Live meeting for the ratepayers. Claudia, why don't you address?
Yeah, good question. Well, we are sort of on the cusp of a lot of social media activities. As Purbakar said, we do have our Regional San Facebook page, Twitter. We did our first Facebook Live meeting at our first community meeting for this project. We've gotten hundreds of views on that, so way more than folks actually coming out in the evening to a public meeting. So I think we'll be investigating that more and more as we move forward.
Perfect, thank you.
I also wanted to mention, one of the things that, in terms of our outreach, the result of the outreach, and also the way that we're explaining, we have so far, I think we're approaching 12 or 13 protests out of 420,000 or so people, customers that we serve.
That's way less than the last time.
That's right. So it actually kept going down and down. It's because, and people understand hopefully, that why we're doing and what we're trying to keep the cost low.
Great, great, that's great news. Okay, well, thank you again, Purbakar.
Thank you, appreciate it.
And we'll see you in a few weeks. And thank you, Claudia, for being here. Okay, next item, please.
Next is item 5B, City Manager's Financial Report, including the Comprehensive Annual Financial Report findings and the Fiscal Year 2016-17 Second Quarter Financial Report.
Good evening, Jim.
Mr. Mayor, as soon as I can get this one out of here.
And then just redact it, yeah. Grab yours.
Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Jim Francis, your Chief Financial Officer, tonight. I want to give you a brief review of the Comprehensive Annual Financial Plan for last fiscal year, and also a report on the second quarter of this fiscal year and where we stand through half the year. To start with, the audited financial statements are, as you know, our final official audited statements that we use with all the rating agencies and everyone else who wants to know where we stand financially. So those are the official, these are the official numbers for the city. Once again, we received a unmodified or clean opinion from the auditors, testifying to the, to the numbers, and those being reasonable, look at your financial situation. To do a, first, a quick summary of the general fund, and using the CAFR is, this is the one where we're gonna be talking about fiscal year 15, '16. I've listed the previous two CAFRs, just for comparison. You can see our revenues came in at $77 million, which was a little bit higher than we had anticipated for that year, at 6.9%. And the expenditures were right around what we had anticipated last year, which was a 5% growth at $74 million. That left us a change in the fund balance of $3.3 million, which flowed to our reserve. So our reserve became $10.9 million, or 14.7%. Again, it was a little higher than we had anticipated because of the triple flip true-up numbers that came in. So that was good news to us, to be able to put $3.3 million back in reserve. Again, looking at this year and projecting it, we're going to be up about 2.5 million, or 2.5% in the revenue to $79.6 million. Our expected expenditures are about $77 million. And again, those are in line with our budget. We expect to have about $1,008,000 going to fund balance. We had anticipated in the budget having about $600,000 going into the reserves, so we're ahead of schedule on that. And if those numbers hold to the end of the year, we'll be at 16.3% in our reserve. To show you a little bit of the history of the reserve, again, during the recession, these numbers from fiscal year '06 through '11, we actually spent $12 million out of the reserve during the, during the recession. And we went from $16 million down to $4 million. And in the last five, six years now, we've put about $9 million back, and we'll be, hopefully, at the end of this year, we'll be at $12.7 million. So it's an interesting contrast, in the sense that that $12.7 is roughly what we spent from the reserve during the recession years. Again, our major sources of revenue are property tax and sales tax are the two biggest ones. We had good growth in property taxes, $21.7 million. We had growth in the sales tax, again, that's somewhat inflated because of that true-up, and that would be about $20 million, and we'd be down around 6, 6.5% growth if we, if we reduce that for that reason. Our charges for services are fairly flat. This represents simply an accounting adjustment between these two years that we're required to make. So this would be a fairly flat line for charges. And again, our transfers in from other funds has been, again, flat during the last year. As we look ahead, again, to this year, we're looking at about 5.5 million, 5.5% growth in our property tax. We're looking, again, this is a little, for sales tax, it's misleading because this is an inflated figure. So this would be about $20 million and .1, and we'll be up to about $21.9. Again, that's about a 6, 6.5% growth in sales tax, if we make that correction. Charges for services, again, it's down slightly, but it's roughly a flat number for us. And our transfers in are up because we had some equipment and building maintenance that we did put in this budget, and that comes from the Equipment Replacement Fund. So that was a planned source of revenue for those projects. On the expenditure side, breaking that down by major expenditure categories, you can see that salaries were flat these two years, and they've come up about 3.6. That represents, this is the first year we've had, again, a cost of living adjustment. We had a couple of new positions added to the budget, and some things of that nature that actually had us come up to 3.6. Benefits, you can see 11 and 10% the last two years. That is almost entirely associated with your PERS contribution. Some of it, the other major factor would be retiree health costs. O&amp;M, operations and maintenance, again, has been fairly flat through these three years. Our outlay represents our commitment to increasing outlay and purchasing major vehicles, especially police and fire vehicles, but vehicles in all the public works and parks and recreation also. In our debt service, we made an effort back a couple of years ago to reduce some of the debt service by prepaying. That's reflected, and that's state-level in this past year. Again, looking at just a summary for this year, we're again looking at about $1.8 million when those numbers come in, and bringing our fund balance up to $12.7 million, or 16.3%. A couple of GASB Government Accounting Standards Board statements I'm obliged to let you know of. One is that we are required now to report the pension plans, net assets, or liabilities in our financial statements, and you'll see some of that in our utility funds more directly and that I'll get to. And also, GASB Statement 72 issued new guidance on how we determine and value our investments. Has very little impact on us, actually, but we did have some new requirements for that. If we look at the Water Enterprise Fund, you can see that charges for services, again, continued to go down through last year, and that we have been monitoring due to the conservation efforts, that's simply on use. Our operational expenses have stayed fairly level. Again, we haven't, we haven't had any new debt service, so that's stayed fairly level. This is the net pension liability that I just spoke of, that we have to add to the financial statements, which just shows the outstanding liability on pension costs in that fund. And our working capital has remained at a high level, which is, we try and keep it up at that level because we want to do most of the capital projects as a pay-as-you-go, rather than go out and bond for that money and create additional debt service. In this year, we think we're going to have an upswing, again, in charges for services. So that'd be the first time with conservation, I don't want to say over, but people are using more water. So that, as a result of that, we should see that swing towards an increase in charges. Our expenses are really a combination of, again, the colas that have been approved in contracts, and some maintenance to the water lines that we've, we've added in to that expense. Debt service has remained the same. Again, we haven't incurred any new debt, and we maintain, we're gonna maintain or increase, actually, our working capital in the, in the water fund. So the water fund's in pretty good shape as we end the year. Wastewater Fund, again, the charges for services has been fairly level, it's increased slightly. Expenses are fairly level. Here's your net pension liability that we're required to report, and your working capital. Again, we try and keep that at the same, for the same reason, at a fairly high level, so that our capital projects are pay-as-you-go. There is no debt service in the wastewater enterprise fund, and we are looking to keep it that way. For this year, we're gonna have, again, a slight increase in charges, we believe, and expenses are up just slightly. As I said, no debt service, and our working capital will stay roughly the same. So the wastewater fund, again, is in pretty good shape. Solid waste, charges for services has gone up slightly over these three years, as we've had some new service, offered some new service areas with some development. Operational expenses, fairly flat, it's gone down a little, that's mainly a reflection of vacancies in, in positions and filling them at lower levels when we have filled them. Your net pension liability is $7.5 million. Again, that's a number we have to keep on the financials. And the working capital is about $3.4 million, and that, again, is a good, healthy number because we try to keep all the equipment that we buy for solid waste. Again, on a pay-as-you-go basis, we don't try and incur any debt when we purchase those Our projection for this year for solid waste is roughly a flat in charges, up slightly in operational expense, but we will have our working capital increase, because we haven't had quite as many purchases this year, and we build that up so we can have purchases later on. The Transit Enterprise Fund is really pretty self-maintaining. It pays for itself through non-operating revenue from the transit district. There isn't a whole lot here. This number looks a little out of place, but that really is just a timing issue on the accounting as of December 31st. That number, we do project to be right around the $1.5 million by the end of the fiscal year. So, again, it's pretty much self-supporting through the transit district funding. Risk management, which covers our healthcare and other workers' comp and liability, those sorts of things. The charges have remained about level. This was a result of insurance refund that we got that added a couple of years ago some money, but this has been a fairly level number. Our operational expenses, this was the budgeted number, that should come down a little bit by the end of the year. Our main expense increase in this area has been in retiree health, and you can see these numbers. That will go up because we've just had an incentive, we have added 44 people from that retirement incentive that went from active employees to retired... to retirees, so we will see our retiree health costs go up in the next fiscal year.
Yeah, but Jim, the active employees' health insurance went up way more than the retirement.
That was a budgeted number. That will not, we don't anticipate that 7.8, that's going to be closer to about 7 million when we get to the end of the year.
Okay.
It's, but we had budgeted 7, 8, and not, we didn't anticipate how many people would be retiring, and so, because we'll have vacancies and a bigger turnover than we anticipated, that number will come down considerably. Compensated Leaves, if you remember, this fund at one time was about $2 million in the hole. We fixed that problem and brought it back to zero a couple of years ago. We build it up in these past two years, as the CAFR shows. It's up to about $1 million in anticipation of the retirement incentive because those are the people that are going to be actually getting compensated leaves more than anyone else. So you'll see this year, this fiscal year's being, most of that being used and spent, this number, fund balance, will come down probably to between the $600,000 and $700,000 range, which is about where we'd like to keep it. Humbug Willow Creek, that's kind of not named correctly anymore. This is where we've really put most of the grant funding projects that we have for Parks and Rec. And what it does is simply monitors, because on most of those grants, we have to pay out first, and then we wait to get reimbursed from the grants. So we, it gives us a feel for how our cash flow is on those kinds of projects. Now, we would anticipate that million dollars that's listed there, that we will get funds from various grants to cover that. It's just, that's about what we're out in using all of those grants.
Do you typically forecast that, or is it just something you?
Well, that's a forecast for this fiscal year. Last fiscal year, as of June 30th of last fiscal year, this is the actual number, the 968. This is a forecast for this fiscal year. So not a whole lot of difference, but, you know, depends how long the projects last and how much they are and how quickly some of the agencies reimburse us.
Bless you.
Tree planting, we've made a conscious effort to maintain that fund balance. Again, a couple of years ago, we had some other charges to this fund, and we've eliminated those. So you now have about, well, at the end of the fiscal year, last fiscal year, you had 704,000. That's probably going to grow a little bit this year, depending on, because there were a couple of projects that you were considering in terms of buying parcels of land to preserve trees. And we have not put that in the projection. So if you do that, that number will come down. But that's, without that, that would be around $800,000 at the end of this year. And that's my quick overview. Any questions?
Thank you, Jim. And certainly, you know, good news on the unrestricted fund balance or reserve is a term, I know. It's not technically correct in your world, but that's what all of us refer to it as. But, you know, to see that recover in that fashion is, you know, my thanks to your department, but every department in the city as far as maintaining expenses to get that built back up because it was a very prudent thing to do during the recession to, you know, maintain a level of service with that reserve. And now we'll build it back up and probably have to endure another, some down years sometime in the future, and we'll be ready for that again. But yeah, thanks for the detail there. And as always, I know this is published to our website under the Finance Department there, so if anybody likes digging into those details, they're.
They'll be on tomorrow.
All right. Very good.
Both presentation and the CAFR.
Excellent. So any other questions, comments for Jim?
Thanks. I was going to make a mention, not only is that the good news, but also the 3.2% employment rate in Folsom. So I mean, that's really great. The economic, California Economic Development Department.
We're generally, we've been the last, probably decade, the lowest number in the region on unemployment.
Yeah.
Which is good for sales tax.
Very good. Well, thanks, Jim. And during your presentation, no one left the room, so you had their attention.
I think if the order might have been different on your agenda, we might be by ourselves, but.
All right. Thanks again, Jim. All right. So next item, please.
Next item is Business from the Floor. Your first speaker is Thomas Christie, and Mr. Christie will be followed by Jaya Bedica.
All right. Good evening, Thomas.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, council members. I'm here in regard to smoking problem for Ordinance 1225. And first of all, I'm going to ask for, my plea will be basically for amendment for the public space, and then I'm going to introduce myself. So I'm a resident at Folsom Garden Mercy, 713 Stafford Street, Complex 1 and 2. I live on the corner next to the street, about 37 feet from the street. Now, I have a conflict between the, what you call the sidewalk and the 50-feet rule. And I just retired about a year ago for health reasons, and so I'm home more, and there's a lot of people starting to, after about, you know, probably 18 months or more into this new regulation. So basically, what has happened, I have become an unfortunate victim of the council, city's council, good intention, because now everybody's moving out to the sidewalk, and they're congregating day and night, and it's getting more and more. So the smoke does drift into my apartment. I'm the closest one on that corner. My apartment is about 200 feet from Theodore Judeo School. So we have a fairway there. Now, we got, with children coming and going. They come and go four times a day, morning classes and afternoon classes. We got some parents and young people that are unemployed that are hanging out there. All along the walkway is total cigarette butts all around there. Children have been exposed to it. I'm being exposed to it. So the problem is bigger than just me.
Okay.
And so I'm asking for an amendment, or for the council to consider an amendment to this, to this rule, because there's a conflict that seemed to be going here. Now, we have the management or the whole staff smoke. They are aware of it, and we, so far as date, there is no compliance to the regulation in Section 12 as to the posting. So I'm out there trying to educate these guys, and they're kind of scattering, but, you know, when you back off and they all come together, and it comes summertime, it's going to get much worse. It did last year. So they have an ashtray, which is within the 50-feet boundary. And so everybody thinks, well, that sidewalk is sanctuary. I am contesting that. So I would please, would like your support to look into it.
Okay. So what I'm going to do, Thomas, and thanks for coming out this evening, so I'm going to have some of our staff folks, probably our city attorney, get back to us as a council on where we're at with this, and thanks for so clearly describing your problem because Ernie mentioned you were going to be here.
I've been working on this for three weeks, and it's busting the heck out of me, to the point, you know, I just, you know.
So we'll see what, you know, what the current law does and doesn't do, and if there are ways to improve your situation.
Well, let me, I did not come without a resolution.
Okay.
Okay. I'm smarter than that. We do have, I do know, not every place has a place for a designated smoking area. We do.
Okay.
But the management doesn't want to do it as of yet.
Okay.
Now, what we have is at the other end, right behind City Slickers. Okay? So there is an area there that they can post as a data, it's actually more than 60 feet from anywhere, any building.
Okay.
I had to purchase this, you know, professional laser meter and show it to the management that this is off, and she's aware of it, but she doesn't want to come out of her comfort zone where she's at.
All right.
So I'm here for asking you guys for some help.
Perfect. Yeah, we maintain some relationships with those folks, so, yeah, we will connect with them and work with them to get this resolved for you, so.
Yeah, I really appreciate it.
All right. Great. Again, thanks for taking the time to come out.
Thank you.
Okay, next member?
Next speaker will be Jaya Bedica, and Ms. Bedica will be followed by Barbara Leary.
Jaya, good evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor, Madam Vice Mayor, Members of the City Council, Madam Clerk, and Mr. City Manager. I would like to present my thoughts and concerns about the rise of hate incidents in our community, primarily against the Muslim community, but not only them, against other cultural minorities and immigrants. I have had friends within the community that have told me related several incidents about targeted efforts towards those that stand out, that look different from other average Americans, those wearing headscarves. The incident recently this weekend with a staff member at the library's Einstein Cafe, it's completely unacceptable. I have friends that worship at the Roseville Tarbia Center, where she has stated to me that she's afraid to send her children to the equivalent of Sunday School. I, myself, have thought twice as to whether I should step out in cultural attire or not, which I feel that as a resident of the city and of this country, everyone has an equivocal right to express not only their cultural identity, but also to live without being in fear about repercussions, about being insulted, about being told to go back to your country, wherever that is. For me, it's here, right? I don't want to think about bland comments to these, you know, incidents or nature. I don't want to have to have my cellphone on record to have some evidence that these things did happen. I don't want to teach my children to be aware of things that can be said against them that would be construed to be hateful. And I have a pretty good group here of other concerned community members and residents who, if you would like to, please go ahead and join me, I'd be more than welcome to have you state also with the city council's permission about their concerns and comments. What I'd like to ask the city to do is to issue a resolution in support of not only the Muslim community, but other minority religions and cultures, ethnicities, and also other communities that feel marginalized in this political climate, that would like their voice to be heard, and to have a very strong proactive statement of support to say that you stand with all of us and not against those that are perceived troublemakers and others. I want the city council to be active about this because I feel that a strong statement would scare others who may think that they have some imperative in making others feel less welcome, and to restore the dignity, I feel, of our community, the diversity of the city, and to respect everybody's right to be here. I'd like to use the remaining time with the council's permission to invite Yanina Casillas with CARE, Council on American Islamic Relations, to say a few words.
Okay. Thanks. And Jaya, before you leave the microphone there, incredibly well said, you're always very articulate, and, you know, thanks for coming out this evening and meeting with me yesterday. And I just want to share with you, I've sat down with our city manager, and we will be meeting with you again next week because that, you know, bigotry and prejudice has no place in Folsom. Folsom, Folsom's better than that. And I might also appreciate your compliments for the actions with our police department because I know some of that stuff has risen to that level, and I appreciate Chief Renos' involvement in those incidents. And I can assure you that that will continue. But we have some ideas we're formulating to make sure that, you know, this doesn't grow. We want it to shrink, and we think we can make it shrink with some very good ideas. But, and thank you, folks, for coming out and your show of solidarity on, you know, this very, very important issue. And so with that, please, and do we have a speaker request card submitted?
We don't. I was hoping to use some of my time, or we can follow up based on the city clerk's preference.
Yes, so let's go ahead and call the next speaker, and then in the meantime, if you want to speak, please fill out a card, and then we'll get it cycled up here, just so we can get you introduced and on the record appropriately.
Thank you so much.
So thanks again, Jaya, for coming out.
Thank you, Jaya.
Mr. Mayor, your next speaker is Barbara Leary, and Ms. Leary will be followed by Fayz Said.
Good evening, Barbara.
Good evening. Happy Valentine's Day.
Thank you.
It's an interesting place to spend Valentine's Day, so.
Yeah. Yes, but you had a choice, and you chose to be here.
Well, we're glad you're here, Barbara.
I forgot to bring little cards for all of you. At any rate, as you all know, I've lived in town for 25 years, and I've been here on a number of occasions in the past, but over that timeframe, Folsom has grown increasingly diverse, and I think it is time for us to make some kind of a collective statement as a council and as a community that we support diversity in all kinds of aspects. From my personal experience, I've had a neighbor, one of my young neighbors, tell me that she saw a Middle Eastern male on the trail be spit upon by someone else recently. I've had neighbors that live around the corner from me, from the Middle East, who have had people leaving notes on their cars and at their house, asking them to go back to where they came from, and these people have lived in the neighborhood as long as I have.
And that's 25 years, right, Barbara?
Five years, since 92. And so I think there, you know, a lot of us are hearing all these little stories about negative behavior towards people who are different. Excuse me. I think, you know, we need to maybe make a broader statement about tolerance for people who are different in any way, whether it's culturally or religiously, whether it's by sexual orientation, you know, because we've had some of the middle school and high school kids undergo some negative behavior towards them. So I strongly support some kind of a statement. I think it's time to do that. As you said, we're a community that can be better than that. Unfortunately, there are people in the community now that aren't, but hoping that they can learn tolerance.
Right, right. And thanks, thanks, Barbara, for coming out. We mentioned statements, and more important than statements to me are efforts, but when we get together, we'll talk about both of those and really make this better.
And I'd like to thank the police department, and they really have done a good job about coming out and understanding people's concerns and researching.
Right.
It's a difficult problem.
Right. It is difficult. It's sad, but we have fixed problems like this before, and, you know, we can and will do this. And my, I would just implore, you know, when people do observe or experience this personally, it's important that the police department, even if it's beyond, you know, an immediately investigative thing from the standpoint of, you know, just having, you know, various amounts of evidence and things like that, it's important from their database just to have records of incidents. So, you know, whether, again, it's observed or personal, I just encourage you to take the time to speak with the police department so that at least they can get that recorded. But as we all know, they're also very good at following up and digging into things in the community. So thanks again for coming out, Barbara.
Thank you.
Next speaker?
Next speaker is Fayz Said, and he will be followed by Todd Pfeffer.
Nice to see you, Fayz.
Thank you. Thanks for your time, Mayor, City Council, and Edward Palmer, thank you for having me here, for giving me a few minutes of your time. I represent the Muslim community of Folsom. We are a mosque located right next to Lakeside Church on Lexington Drive. We represent about 90% of the Folsom Muslim community. We have about 200 to 300 families living in Folsom. I, myself, have lived in Folsom for about 15 years, and my family's been here for about 25, since the late 80s. And we, I wanted to bring to your attention an open house we are planning to have on March 18th. We have an open house every six months, but the reason I mention I've been here so long is because in the last couple of months, we have seen a really high uptick in hate speech, if you will, and verbal abuse, things like that, in Folsom and surrounding areas with regards to our, to families in our community. And the open house has been a really good tool for us to reach out to other segments of the community. I do want to mention, we have had lots of positive support. We have had lots of families visiting us with their children to the mosque. The positive has been 100 to 1. For every one negative incident, we've had 100 positive incidents. I really want to highlight that. I really want to highlight that, and I would like to think that the negative incident is from people who are passing by Folsom, they're not from the city. So, but this is my personal invitation to the council to, if you can find a few minutes of your time, to visit us on March 18th. We have had council members at our mosque. Mr. Sheldon has been to us, and Mr. Gaylord has famously visited us last year. So I would like to invite each one of you to visit our open house on March 18th, and it will be a good boost to our community, to the children in our community, to see city council members there. And we plan to advertise it heavily in Folsom and get as many visitors as we can.
What's the timeframes?
It's from 11 to 5 on March 18th. It's a Saturday, I believe.
Well, thank you for the invitation there, and I just checked my calendar, and that day works for me, so I'll definitely come by and visit you folks. And I do, I was sharing with you the other day, breaking ground at the mosque site that, you know, still a work in progress. But that was, I remember specifically, I was mayor, it was 2007, and I remember a number of council members, specifically remember Vice Mayor Howell there. And it was, it was, you know, neat to see, you know, any gathering of folks like that. So, so look forward to being there and attendance. And what I would ask you to do is, all of our email addresses are just right on our website, so if you could punch that invitation through specifically to all of us council members, we sincerely appreciate that.
Awesome, we'll do that this week.
Thank you.
Can I ask you a quick question?
You bet, you bet. Yeah, you're okay.
So one of the things, when I visited your families, is the thing, aside from just going and the acceptance, acceptiveness of the Muslim community when I was there, the thing that struck out to me was, six months ago prior to that, you know, in running for election and running for office, talking to folks in the streets, I didn't necessarily see that intolerance because it was just kind of oblivious to me. But actually hearing from folks who live in that realm, it's obvious. One of the things that struck out that was the most beautiful to me was seeing the prayer service and how committed you are to each other and your community and what that meant to everybody. So I don't know if that's, it might be an idea, like if, just open, a little more open on it, like?
Sure, yeah, we would do a demonstration of our prayer service, things like that, on the, at the open house. We really like to think that the more people meet American Muslims, there'll be less incidents such as hate crimes and things like that. So we hope this open house goes towards that.
Yeah, and I think that's a very good point, is, you know, kind of the informative educational process is, you know, much better. And as I mentioned to you in the meeting, it's, we just need to remind people to really, you know, you know, live to your hopes and not your fears, you know, don't let that sort of noise, you know, get to behavior that's out of character. And again, I like to think, and I know, we have great character in the city of Folsom, but again, thanks for coming out this evening and thanks for the kind invitation there.
Thanks for your time.
Okay, next speaker?
Your next speaker is Todd Pfeffer, and Mr. Pfeffer is followed by Bill Smith.
Good evening, Todd. Hi. This is my third time appearing before you in the last six months. I was here two months ago on December 13th, and three months prior to that, on September 13th. Let me remind you that at my request, the city conducted a traffic study which proved my fear true. There is a speeding problem on Empire Ranch Road. Nearly one out of two reported accidents on Empire Ranch Raceway, I mean, Road, is a direct result of speeding. If you include unsafe driving patterns, the number increases to more than two-thirds of all accidents resulting from dangerous driving habits. You know as well as I do that people speed down Empire Ranch Road, then speed down Iron Point Road to get to Highway 50 as fast as possible, rather than take East Bidwell Street or El Dorado Hills Boulevard. None of this will change unless drivers fear the consequences, namely, being issued a speeding ticket. Sadly, not once has anybody from the council nor the city contacted me to discuss this matter. I still recommend that stop signs be added at the three-way intersection at Woodhead Street and Empire Ranch Road. My question for all of you is, does somebody need to die in order for you to do something? It shouldn't take somebody losing their life to prompt action. Please, do something about this serious and dangerous situation. Thank you.
Thanks for coming out again, Todd.
Okay, so next speaker, please.
Next is Bill Smith, and Mr. Smith is followed by Yanina Casillas.
Happy Valentine's Day, Folsom. I keep coming up with solutions for what everybody keeps having to complain about. Everywhere I go all the time, I've realized an institute that's a new program, and I'm going to have the way I think studied. Because I've been doing this for the last 40 years plus, since I left the numbers game behind me with the statistics in school. And Mom put me through. I asked the gentleman who just spoke how to pronounce his last name, just before I get up to speak. I picked up the card on the way out from Prabhi Hacker Somberapew, the sanitation guy. I'm going to have to get his partner to explain to me how to pronounce his name. So what he was speaking about was, that's the second thing I wrote on there. The first thing was about flying, like he was just speaking about. So when it comes to sanitation, did you know that four billion people in the world do not have appropriate sanitation? Well, I can speak to the problem as a solution-based business for this community and participate You can do a single revolution of a barrel, and out the other end comes ready-to-go black compost. I've learned so many things in the last 40 years from so many sources. I've had to bury my course so many times. About four or five years ago, I had to take 27 modes of transit down to the Bay Area and back, and change my course and study the whole way. On the way back, the train wasn't going to run in Fairfield, where they used to have the guy with the neighborhood electric vehicles with all the contracts. Last time I was here, I was speaking about the gentleman from Disneyland who set up all the Disneylands in the world. He's another 90-year-old I've been losing on the road to being more successful. Now, people don't have appropriate sanitation, how can that be? Bill Gates and Warren Buffett, is that his name, Warren? Spoke in the internet. And Bill spoke before about not staying in school for four years. There's a junior college here. They allowed me to go on to the higher learning when I went to junior college. I needed like two or three units or something. So what I've resolved since I left school, and Mom put me through, Mom got the equal pay for the women, and she retired with $1,250 a month, 45 years ago.
Bill, the three minutes are getting close to being up, so if you could wrap up for us here?
Okay, what I was speaking about last time I was here, was about having what it turns out to be is a Smitty Utopian vehicle. I'm going to be solving a lot of problems with this because I've decided it's going to be a lot of different vehicles.
Bill, I need your, I need your final thoughts, Bill, we've got to.
It's going to be more than 100 ways combined of doing a vehicle. And I'm going to solve so many problems you're seeing on the government channels that it's just silly.
Okay, thanks, thanks.
Speak to you again.
Thanks, Bill.
As soon as possible. I'd like to be able to do the six-hour version with the crew.
Okay.
Have a better day.
Okay.
I got to go to Valentine's Day.
Next speaker, please.
Your next speaker is Yanina Casillas, and she will be followed by Zakia Siddiq.
Good evening, Yanina.
Good evening, thank you, Members of the Council. My name is Yanina Casillas, and I'm with the Council on Islamic Relations. We are the nation's largest Muslim civil rights group, and I currently represent government affairs in the Sacramento area, as well as all the way from Redding to Bakersfield. And I do statewide legislation, and I'm here to talk about how we at CARE really focus on protecting individuals, not just the Muslim community, but from religious discrimination or perceived, based on their actual religion or perceived religious identity. And we work in coalitions with many different peoples from many different faiths. And one thing that we really emphasize is the youth and working with the youth, and we actually release a bullying report every year. And I was actually at Folsom, the Muslim community of Folsom, I was at the masjid, and we did a bullying report, and we found that there are students from middle school to high school suffering from bullying on various different levels in regards to like actual physical violence, emotional abuse, both from teachers and students. And thankfully, there are a few staffs in like districts that are working with us. That's something that I wanted to put on your radar in terms of just the well-being of our youth and creating healthy environments in our education system. And we at CARE have been working statewide with local city municipalities, offering trainings, cultural relevant trainings, and just general understandings, helping draft resolutions for the communities or ordinances. And I'm currently on a working group with Sacramento City addressing immigrant communities and vulnerable communities, and we are more than happy to work with you all. And also, I've been in contact with community members in Folsom, so whatever you all need in terms of resources or just connections to the community, we would be more than happy to support you all and really grateful that you all have offered this space to community members, and I look forward to the work that we will continue to do here in Folsom. Thank you.
Oh, great, thanks for bringing your experience here this evening. And my, just a quick question, any previous work working with the Folsom Cordova School District, do you have any?
In terms of us working with Folsom specifically, no, but we have met with local students, like the local MSAs and some teachers from the district.
So we might, you know, as we kind of gather up our thoughts on this, bring some of those folks in as far as our school district folks, just again, you know, for two reasons. Number one, that they understand some of what's going on out there, and number two, you know, based on, you know, even some of your experience, how best to address those sorts of issues. So we'll probably gather them up as well.
That'll be great. And also, we work with the refugee community, and we've been working with Sac City Unified and Twin Rivers and whatnot, and we're finding that Sacramento is the place to be for refugees. And we're finding school districts aren't prepared for that, and there's bullying and et cetera on that, so we would be more than happy to help you all.
Okay, thank you. Thanks for coming out this evening. Next speaker, please.
Your last speaker is Zakia Siddiq.
Zakia, thanks for coming out this evening.
Thank you for having me. Good evening, everyone. I'm really glad to be here today. I was so kind of nervous.
That's okay, you're doing, you're doing fine.
My name is Zakia, and I'm 20 years old, I go to college. I live near Sheldon Park and Antone Station. I've lived here my whole life, and I went through the public school system from Antone Station Elementary through Folsom High School. I currently go to Folsom Lake College as well as Consumnas River College. It's kind of perfect that the city council falls on February 14th, because exactly two years ago, on February 10, 2015, was the tragic events of Chapel Hill, when three students from the University of Northern Carolina were murdered because of simply their faith. And I'm really nervous, I'm sorry.
That's okay, I know it's emotional for you as well, so keep going, you're fine.
So, that was, I think, a Tuesday, and the next day I had school. And I am usually one not to be nervous about my faith or how I look, but the very next day, when I got to school, I was so nervous to leave my car. And it was such a weird feeling, because I've never had that feeling before. I grew up in Folsom, I have never had the experience of being bullied against, and I was always grateful of that. But the feeling of fear, it was not a pretty one, it was not fun. A lot of my friends also were in similar situations, and they felt like they didn't want to go to class that day, or that week, or maybe a different month. I'm sorry, I'm not crying, I'm just really nervous.
Okay, you're doing fine, you're doing fine.
But I, I'm here because I had that fear, but I'm also very grateful because I was never put in that situation where someone discriminated against me, or they were hateful towards me. And that's why I wanted to be thankful today, because living in Folsom my whole life, I thought that I would always be bullied against or have some sort of prejudice, but I thankfully didn't. I started the MSA, the Muslim Student Association, at Folsom High School when I went there. And I was expecting a lot of hate and fear, but I was just welcomed by the staff and the community and the students at Folsom High. And the MSA is still going strong, so I'm really happy about that. I just, I want there to be a sort of open barrier between the city of Folsom and the Muslim community. My dad has always worked with the city of Folsom for the Masjid Bilal project, and I just want to keep that barrier open. If there's any questions or anything that we can provide you with, I, we are more than welcome, and thank you, citizens of Folsom.
Yeah, thanks, thanks for that positive message. And I know everyone who spoke here, you know, you mentioned, you know, these incidents that are, you know, just shameful, but, you know, again, emphasizing how much positive there is as well. So, again, we'll, we'll get together, put our heads together, and make sure that this is something that is eventually my hope completely eliminated from, you know, not only Folsom, but everywhere, but.
Thank you. I would also encourage going to open houses, but also just the MSA meetings in general at Vista de la Go and Folsom High, just to see what the students have to say.
Yeah, that's a, that's a great idea, that's a, that's a very good idea. We'll put that on our list of things that we can do to, to help connect everybody. And thanks for starting that organization, you have a lot of, a lot of courage.
Is there something, can you email us some more information about the MSA?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. My little sister is part of the MSA now, because I've graduated, but I'll definitely tell her to reach out.
She's got to live up to her big sister, huh?
All right, thank you so much.
Great, great. And good luck with your school at Folsom Lake and Consumnas. One school wasn't enough for you, huh?
No, I choose the good professors, so the Oken Professor over at Ceresis is top-notch.
Very good, very good.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, thanks for coming out this evening.
Okay, any other speakers?
You have no more speakers, Mr. Mayor, next would be your consent calendar.
Okay, so consent, I believe we have a request to pull item C.
Right.
And item G.
I'm going to pull item G, all by my own.
Okay, so any other items to repull for discussion or separate vote?
I'll move A, B, D, E, F, H, I.
And I'll second that. Please call the roll.
Council members Miklos, Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Moran.
Yes, and so with that, ask the clerk to just read the title of our first pulled item, item 7C.
So 7C is the mayor's appointment and confirmation by the city council of planning commissioners to serve on the Historic District Commission.
And I believe this was pulled by Ernie?
Right, Mr. Mayor, thank you for letting me pull this. And I want to start by, first I want to caveat my thing. I was at a planning commission, I know sometimes you all get nervous when I go there because I don't always stay quiet. But I was there for one reason, and I stayed for that reason, and that was to watch the sworn in of the new people. I thought that was great, and I did that to all my commissions, other than the library I missed out on, that, too bad. But while I was there, I observed something that I thought wasn't right. And therefore, as you know me, if I don't think it's right, I'm going to come back to you and ask you about it. Because this body is the real body. Our commissions are supplemental to us, they help us, and they certainly help us, and I'm all for them. So tonight, what I'd like to do with your concurrence, is allow my planning commissioner that I have appointed for a second time to make a little introduction, and then I'll go and follow that up, and then I'll let the, excuse me, I'm fighting a cold. I'll let the, we'll turn it over to the whole council for debate, if you will, if that's okay with you.
So do we have a speaker request card for whoever's?
I don't know if she has one, she might have one.
Okay.
I told her in case. And my appointment is Ms. Jennifer Lane.
Thanks, Jennifer.
Hi, everybody.
Good evening, Jennifer.
Happy Valentine's Day. I'm just here to encourage you to let me participate on the Historic District Commission once again. I'm just going to read you some information about my past and where I've come from. As you know, I was a teacher in, at Oak Chan. I started my career here in Folsom when we had about 6,000 people, one-stoplight. I used to bring my students here to City Hall to learn about the city government. As you know, Andy and Steve, Ernie. As you know, Andy and Steve, Ernie, you have entertained my students. From there, we would go to the Folsom History Museum and learn about the wonderful history that Folsom has to share. During those times, I would find that the students and the parents had never been to the Folsom History Museum. So it was, it was a great learning curve for me to know that they, they didn't know about this great history. I've lived in Folsom for 35 years, and when I first moved here, we had the one stoplight on Sutter Street, Sutter and Riley, I think it was.
That was the first one?
I have been very active in the historic district in my neighborhood for as long as we've had Historic Folsom Residents Association. I'm a charter member and a board member still. In 2001, I represented the historic district citywide regarding the 50 neighborhoods that were looking at low-income housing. I was on the historic district commission from 2005 to 2007. And in 2014, I allowed over 500 people in my home during the holiday home tour, which gave money to the Muir House as well as the museum. So I know you know my passion, and there's so much that's going to be going on in the historic district with the railroad block coming on, that I would just love to encourage you to support me and be on that commission, as well as the planning commission.
Okay, great. Thanks, thanks for coming out this evening, Jennifer.
Thank you.
Okay, and you had to pick it up from there. I think Jennifer spelled out her credentials and her qualifications for this, one of these While we sat there and the, and the chair conducted the election for this particular thing, as one member of, one that was elected, John Onnes, was missing that particular night, we had a six-person commission, and it turned out that on Jennifer's nomination and that of the other gentleman, it tied, three and three, there was no tiebreaker. Now normally, that case should be referred up to us, and for both names, and we would decide the course of the action. There'd be three coming up for the two spots. That didn't happen. The chair did, as I'm sure he thought he had prerogative, he kept going back and back and defining the position of the park, of the planning commission position on this HTC. And he kept stressing that it was a professional, it wasn't part of the community, it wasn't because you lived there or anything that connected with the historical district, but it was the qualifications of a planning commissioner, and to bring to, help the HTC, the other five members. But it all sounds great. And then he nominated an individual that was the only one that could have been nominated other than Jennifer at that particular time, because we had two brand-new commission members that night, two brand-new, and two old timers and Jennifer returning. Well, then he turns right around, and he nominates an individual, and the individual gives his qualifications, same as Jennifer gave hers, like she did tonight. And when his, his, his main stress was that he doesn't go to Old Town often, but he goes out on the occasion, have some wine and drink, and we all, quite a few of us do that. But then he said he was celebrating that night his sixth month, six months as a planning commissioner. Now, I found that extremely hard to put in my mind after 30 years of serving the city, where that six months of experience changes to a commissioner starting her second tour of four years on the commission. I just, I found that just absolutely ridiculous. And so what we had was just strictly some disguise of a party line, which sometime we've got to get rid of that in this town, okay? So I'm asking you, as a whole, as a whole commission, or the council, to re-look at this problem. And I, I know Roger was sitting right next to me and saw, and heard the same thing, he was there for the same purpose I was, to watch his two appointments be sworn in. That's not right, that's not the Folsom way, okay? If the, if the chair would have just said, okay, it's a council's position to do it, to judge it, that's our job, kick it up. You don't get to keep talking until you change it. And what happened, one of the new person got so confused, as I asked him later, why did you change your vote? He didn't know what was going on. It was primarily because, excuse me for this cold, because he, he, first day on the, on the seat, and he just got confused, and he just changed his vote. That's wrong, okay? Now, if there's, and I'm speaking to my planning commissioner, okay, that's my appointment, and I stick up on my appointments, but I don't go overboard. If they're wrong, they're wrong. If they're right, I say they're right. But I also, if I was in that, that room and something happened like this, it wasn't my planning commission, I'd still be here talking to you, okay? I'm fair, it's fair. And so I just asked tonight that when you either postponed this and maybe let the other gentleman come up and explain his qualifications, because it's not fair, he's not here, I don't believe, or take in consideration, what are we talking about, four years of experience versus six months, excuse me, okay? And the, and the guy did not try to enhance his qualification, he was very honest. And to anybody other than with another agenda, it was obvious he wasn't qualified for that job. So to sum this up and do this, I wish that the, the vote would be had, another person add Jennifer on this and vote, I don't say John Onnes, he was voted and it was, okay. But on the other gentleman, I think it needs to be, Jennifer should compete with him, and this council should make a vote.
So, so I'll just jump in here with a few thoughts. You know, first of all, you know, as far as the way this process works, I mean, I'm not dissatisfied with the way this has always worked, and, you know, to subvert, it just feels funny for, and again, you know, for the, for the mayor to just ignore the wishes of another appointed body, just, it doesn't feel right to me. I'm not aware of all of this that's going on, I just, I see this, and, and, you know, frankly, to say this person didn't know what was going on, I don't know if I would want somebody characterizing me as not knowing what was going on. So I, you know, I don't know if you really want to say that, Ernie, about somebody.
Only because I asked him that, it was his answer to me.
Okay. But, you know, maybe there's, in the future, there's a different way to do this, but this is, you know, the way this has worked in the past is this is, you know, an appointment by their peers to, you know, kind of a separate body, and I think we've always been comfortable with that. This is the first time I've experienced some resistance to that. So, you know, I'm, I'm not at all interested at this time in deviating from that process, but I'd be happy to talk to you further, Ernie, but.
Maybe I can not to interrupt, but.
Sure.
So I'm going to take you to task on one point. I don't think the, the planning commissioner that made that decision didn't do it out of confusion. Where you're right is that that decision went back on a six-person panel three times, I believe. So they're inconsistent three times with tie vote. So they made, they made a motion to pass it to council or continue deliberating. So that's, I think, what the sticky issue is, is that instead of it just going up to council and moving forward, it was, it was.
So they deliberated more and came up with this selection process?
Correct.
By a, by a fair vote, correct?
It was a fair vote, yeah.
Right.
But just awkward.
Yeah, awkward happens all the time.
Mr. Mayor, let me jump in, and I'll throw a historical knowledge in this one. The process they followed is absolutely 100% accurate. The process, when you're doing nominations, does automatically go up to our, this body on a tie vote. We, we went through iterations for numerous opportunities at, at this city council, that we had a tie vote because we were short an individual, and/or for whatever reason it was, and we would continue with the concurrence of many city attorneys, that that process procedure was relevant and accurate to do that way, or you had to wait for the full body. In this particular case, and I'll use city council, we had to do many, many times where we had to break the tie vote by constant deliberation, talking, so because we had a member that had to recuse, so there was not another opportunity to change that vote. So there, the, the historical data, as far as the appointment process, is ingrained within our ordinance and the charter, and certainly the establishment of the committees and commissions, number one. Number two, there was also a longtime member of the planning commission present besides the chair and Jennifer as well. And the two new individuals, I think, you know, I've met both of them, and I think they're, they're very smart individuals. In fact, I believe both were nominated as well. So you had all these people wanting to do it. I don't disagree and dispute Jennifer's qualifications whatsoever. I mean, I already have three people that are specific to the historic district. If we didn't have those categories, Jennifer would be the natural appointment, absolutely without equivocation, not only from her knowledge and experience in the historic district, also her experience now as a planning commissioner. But like you, I don't, I'm not going to overturn a lower body that went through deliberation. Oh, and by the way, and I know you guys were there, you also have to remember, the chair asked the city, the assistant city attorney who was present, you know, if, if talking about it and talking about it and going through to break the tie, or, as it was exposed by Roger, and I think you're absolutely accurate, or we can send it up to the city council and let them decide, or we can continue the meeting. So they had three choices, send it up to us, continue the meeting, or wait for the seventh individual. And the commission as a whole decided to keep talking and deliberating. And, you know, I could see if it was close, but it was a 5-1 vote after they all talked and deliberated, where the two individuals specifically, the new ones, said to the chair, we'd like to take another vote because I think we're ready to make a decision. And so from the request of the twoest members that I dispute, that they didn't know what was going on, because it was them that made the request to the chair to take another vote, and the 5-1 vote was cast. So again, I'm not disputing Jennifer's background, I think she'd be absolutely wonderful. We already have three people representing the district, but most importantly, in my opinion, is I'm not going to deviate from the process that we charge our lower committees and commissions. We don't tell them what to do, they make recommendations, recommendations up to us. I think it'd be the wrong message specifically since they followed the process and they did it with the concurrence of the, of the, excuse me, assistant city attorney. And I think that was absolutely 110% correct in the way these things are established.
And I, I'm going to have to agree with, with Steve on this, having sat on this council for the past 19 years and four years before that on the planning commission, it's the planning commission's responsibility to determine who of their two members they want to have sit on the historic district commission. That's how it's always taken place, and it's unfortunate that, that Mr. Onnes was not at the meeting that night. But if, if, if they had come forward and said, we don't, we don't know, you decide, my recommendation, as I sit here right now, would have been to tell them, go back, make sure you have all seven of your people there, and come back with a recommendation. This is your people that you know, you understand how the whole process works, and come back to the city council with a recommendation. It's not, it's not our responsibility, nor, and I think the planning commissioners themselves have more background on the individuals, and they make their recommendations for a reason, so.
Well, I don't want to debate back and forth, I just want one thing. Some of the things I heard, I was there, okay, and I do hear and see pretty well, okay? And I don't exactly find the same, if that chair would have referred it back to a full agenda, I'd have no problem, okay? I, I believe in the number of votes. It wasn't done, it was talked to, and they would have been talking to the end of the moon to get what he wanted done, it's happened before.
Well, Ernie, I'm going to interrupt you and disagree with you. I watched the meeting. I watched it from.
I was there.
I watched it, so I may not have been there, but I watched it after the fact, because I heard this could be an issue. And quite frankly, the chair didn't do what he wanted to do. He had the commissioners, he asked all the commissioners, the commissioners were participating all the time. He didn't, you know, the chair does not have the authority to say, I'm just going to do this. He asked many times about, do you want to revote? And I think they took three. He asked for guidance from the assistant city attorney, which he gave him, the chair, the guidance. So it wasn't singularly controlled for a singular outcome by the chair of the planning commission. The commission as a whole that was present that night made the decisions to try a couple different votes. He actually got to the point with the assistant city, assistant city attorney, says, okay, we've had these many votes, so here's our three choices, what do you want to do? And then two commissioners said, we'd like to take one more vote. So it was the commissioners that directed the procedure, not the chair.
I, I believe it was one, not two, but the second one, or they reversed the votes.
Watch it, go watch the tape like I did.
Okay, so it's just a disagreement on the.
I'll move the item, Mr. Mayor, the recommendation.
And I'll second it.
Okay, and, and I'll just add final thought, just where I come from on this, is, is I would rarely ever be interested in trying to subvert some autonomy that exists in another body that we have. We all select these people individually, and I just, I, I just, as mayor, would not want to pollute that process by trying to come up with a, a different way of thinking about this on the fly. Now, if there's some interest on this council to change this process, that's where you do it.
I think there's some interest on this council to review the purpose of the HTC to begin with. I think, I think it's outlived whatever the thing was.
Ernie, absolutely. Those are, those are perfect comments, is that, you know, with what we have now, I'm, I'm not interested in changing that on the fly, because frankly, I don't know if I could. I suppose I have the, you know, according to.
The council's the final authority.
But, but, you know, I, I just feel like the, the.
Okay, Mayor, all I did is ask you for the courtesy you gave me to present this case, and that's fine, thank you.
No, I, I think it's been educational, but, but again, to, if we're interested in changes, whether it's historic district commission or how we populate that, then, you know, that's a discussion for another day, but, so with that, we have a motion and a second on item 7C. Please call the roll.
Councilmembers Miklos, Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Moran.
Yes, all right. Nice to have a 3-2 vote occasionally, that's, that's healthy stuff. So, so with that, next pulled item.
Item G.
Our city clerk has this one?
Item G. Resolution number.
That sounded better, I just want to say.
Resolution number 9879, authorizing the city manager to execute an agreement with Vincent Garaire Construction for construction of the water treatment plant, grading and pump station number one, storage basin reuse project, and appropriation of funds.
And of course, I would pull the one with the longest title. The engineer's estimate was low by $247,000, and the bids were all over the place. 100% difference in the low bid and the high bid, and we actually won. So why is that?
Okay, Mayor Moran, members of the council, Marcus Yasutaki, environmental water resources director, Vice Mayor Howell, yes, I would agree that you are correct in stating the large difference between the low bid and the high bid. One thing I would like to point out, though, is if you look at the two low bids, there's only about a $16,000 difference. After looking through the bids with staff earlier today, there's about five specific bid items in the bid package that had the largest variance, that made up for the highest cost difference. Now, we haven't contacted the, any of the contractors to see why one may have put, you know, close to one, I mean, $2.3 million higher in those specific five line items, but after consulting with the engineering consulting firm and with staff, you know, bids that we did get in terms of what we are recommending to approve, do seem to fall in line. One of the difficulties, I believe, with this specific project is when our department does pipeline projects, our bids are pretty darn close to where our engineers' estimates are. If you look at this project, it's a little different in terms of what we do day-to-day. It's not a piping underground project, it's a soil removal and replacement project, it's fencing, it's landscape, it's paving and grading, so not things that we typically do in, on a day-to-day basis. And so I believe that led to probably the, some of the discrepancy in the.
You guys do the design work, or did an outside consultant do it?
The outside consultant did, did the plans and specs, and then the engineer's estimate.
Okay, so you're, it seemed like you're blaming your own staff, but it's not your own staff that did it.
Yep. Mr. Mayor and Councilmember Howell, maybe I can take a little responsibility for that. This is what happens when the city manager directs their engineering staff to 95630, what started off as a relatively simple project to remove construction spoils from the, from the land, or from the water treatment plant, to also including some neighborhood enhancements, relocating the entrance to the, to the water treatment plant, and to making the soils site where the, where the spoils are going to end up be more park-like rather than just another spoils pile moved to another part of the city, because it isn't a nice part of the bike trail along Folsom Boulevard there. So this was a product of, of me directing Mr. Yasutaki to do any number of things that kind of created a little bit of a convoluted product, project, but it all started with removing the spoils from the. removing the spoils from the, from the water treatment plant site. So this is really the kind of 95630-style spoils removal.
Lesson, never, never take orders from somebody who doesn't have a P E at the end of their name. But suggestion.
He didn't have much of a choice, but this is kind of what happens.
But suggestion for the future.
Yes.
When that's happening, I'm sure that folks from Parks and Rec or maybe Public Works would have been happy to take a look at that.
That's a great idea.
And what I always like to say in these instances, I am a software engineer.
And if you're dealing with pipelines, or you're dealing with pipelines, have Marcus look at it before it goes out.
I doubt that. I don't know. Anybody in Parks and Rec would be so crazy to challenge the city managers. I wouldn't do it.
That's not what I'm suggesting, Ernie. I'm suggesting that Marcus should have spoken to the people who, because this is trying to turn a wastewater facility into a park, that I'm sure that both Dave and Roberts folks would have been happy to help Marcus with the estimate that wasn't a pipeline.
Correct.
Understood. We've all learned a lesson.
So we're going to be allowed to swim in the pond or something?
No, we're going to fill it in with dirt.
We're going to fill it with soil.
You'll be able to sit on a bench and gaze into the open space, though.
Okay.
Wait for deer to come by.
I believe we have beat this item to death.
I'll move the item now.
Second.
Okay, moved in second, and please call the roll.
Councilmembers Myklos, Sheldon, Gaylord, Howell, and Morin.
Yes.
Thank you, and I'll work on getting our city manager a stamp.
Okay, all right.
I can loan him my study guide. I still have it.
So with that, the city manager has the floor.
But not perhaps the last word. Good evening, everyone, and just a couple of quick reminders. We have general plan workshops coming up. Not the first, but the most recent of many to come, workshops on the draft general plan that was presented to the city council earlier. We do have district work, commission workshops coming up, and I'll give you the dates here in a minute. But this is the first of many opportunities for the public to really get into the weeds of our general plan and ask staff and consultants about various intricacies of what makes this community great and how we plan to keep it great between now and 2035. So this will be in front of the historic district commission on February 15th at 5:00 PM, the planning commission at 6:30 PM, Parks and Recreation Commission on March 7th at 6:30 PM, and back to the city council again in draft form on March 28th. The general plan is expected to be adopted sometime around September, so we're talking about fall of this year. There's plenty of time between now, when it's in draft stage, to get information out to the public, receive their comments, and incorporate all of their best ideas and aspirations into the final document that will be presented to you later in the year. So we're very excited about this project. It's been a few years in the making. We've received a bunch of comments over the last couple of years in the construction of the draft. And again, this is just the most recent of many opportunities previously and to come to comment on the general plan. I want to take a minute to express gratitude. I often don't get as many opportunities. I like to thank people in the community for doing the great work that they do, and I can't do it by name because there was many, many of them. But just to recognize that we did once again have volunteers construct a new bike pedestrian bridge led by members of our own staff and volunteers from dock and engineering and Friends of the Folsom Parkway. Held a work party on February 4th to build the Natomas Ditch Bridge, which was along our trail project out on. Bowen Road. Thank you. I had a little bit of memory lapse there. So it's a great connection of our bike trail, and once again, you ask residents of the Folsom community to help out, and they, and they do. They come out in droves. So bicycles might be some of the oldest modes of technology for transportation, but we also deal with new technology. And if you were to visit our library, you can get into the latest in 3D printing. And we do have presentations on 3D printing and 3D printers available for public use. And you can learn more about this expanding field of 3D printing at the library on February 18th from 2:00 to 3:30 PM, and learn from industry veteran Jeremy Ivy about the industry and what it promises to bring the world. So we're very excited to have 3D printing in our library, thanks to the generosity of Intel Corporation and many others. So with that, good night.
Well said, Mr. City Manager. Roger, got anything for us this evening?
Yeah, a couple of things. I wanted to congratulate two of Folsom fires for their promotions today. We got to see that happen today, and Dan Heverity's here, Chief Heverity. So congratulations to them. I'm not sure if folks are aware, but Folsom has its own, I guess, celebrity, whatnot, if you will, that graduated from Folsom High. Her name's Sophia Amoruso, and she kind of took the, the last 15 years, she took the fashion industry by storm and started a small company called Nasty Gal. But Netflix is actually launching a TV show based around her life, so it's pretty interesting. It comes out in April, but she's a Folsom High grad and has done amazing for just business-wise and fashion, so it's pretty cool to see. But, and then last but not least, the topic of, the topic that, you know, that most of this meeting was about was about just, just general acceptance and whatnot for one's race and religion and what, and, and a lot of, a lot of us do go about day-to-day and not realize that that does happen, because we're, it's not within our realm, or we're just not paying attention, but it is an important topic. And to me, tonight was, was amazing to see folks step out from the chat room or Facebook and just go in, in public and address it head-on. So I was glad to see that. And I look forward in working with the community as a whole to try and make folks feel accepted. So, thank you, and happy Valentine's Day.
All right, thanks. Did Sophia, was she close to your graduating year?
Here before, or she graduated the year after, I did.
Okay, yeah, cool. Good deal. Ernie?
Excuse me, I'm sorry what this code is. I thought I got rid of it and it comes back. I had the opportunity to see three workshops today before the meeting, and it's always enjoyable just to qualify for a badge, and that was good. I just want to share a little insight on what we saw, and I know how Andy must be really busy. I respect his job more by watching what was on TV with the big damn north of us. We have to feel really hurting for the people that have been displaced, 200,000 or so that had to get up and get out, okay? And some, the kids had no shoes. And I'm heartworn with the reaction on Facebook of our people hearing the sound, offering their homes to help them, but they need it. It just tells us, don't take us for granted, that dam that we have by us. You never know what could happen. And that's a good example, but it's a real eye-opener where we live, when you look at what other people have to go through. And you're talking about Marysville, Uva City, I mean, everybody. It's, so all I'm saying is, I'm sure this city sends their best wishes to all the people that have been displaced, and hopefully they get escorted away quick, and they all get back home like, enjoy, like we do enjoy our homes.
The evacuation order was lifted this afternoon.
Thanks, thanks, Ernie.
The evacuation order was lifted this afternoon.
All right. Steve?
Yeah, just a couple of quickie things. I'd like to do a shout-out to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, because they call themselves now instead of fishing game. A lot of people don't realize that the hatcheries, Orville as well as here at Nimbus, are one of the main hatcheries that actually will stock Folsom Lake amongst others. And my cousin happens to work at the Lake Orville Fish Hatchery, and she was one of four or five dozen that were in harm's way for quite some time to help relocate millions and millions of fish that were in jeopardy of being lost, obviously. And it would absolutely just decimated the fish population, not only what they plant here in Orville and Folsom, but the natural salmon runs and the things you hear about all the time. That's the importance of when you see the salmon coming up the rivers and whatnot. My cousin also had to relocate, and then she had to come back to relocate the fish again, along with that team, because of the emergency spillway. So a lot of people don't realize that there are so many behind-the-scenes people. And I got to tell you, you know, for anybody that's a sportsman at all, what those fish and wildlife folks did by putting themselves in harm's way constantly for about 72 hours straight to move the first hatchery fish from Orville to Thermalito Bay, that's incredible. That's how much love they had for their job. And certainly, like the one commentator said, they treat those fish as if it's their babies. And I'll tell you what, to put themselves in that kind of harm on the name of fish and recreation and commitment to California, we don't hear enough good stories about fish and wildlife. That's a fantastic story. So thank you to all the fish hatcheries around the region that went to the rescue of Orville and, and all the work that they did there. And I'm glad a lot of people are, are safe and get to be coming back to their homes. It's under a warning now instead of a mandatory. And then to Roger's point and the rest of the council, I agree with you. It's very disappointing to actually have people have to come to us and tell us that, in our community, of all communities, that we still have the ignorance and intolerance of people because your race, religion, creed, color, sexual orientation, whatever it may be. I think this community made a very strong statement a number of years ago when the mosque was being built. And we all remember, we took a lot of heat in front of us as well as publicly about how dare we allow a mosque to be built. And I'll say the same thing today that I said that evening. We're all Americans, period. I don't care if you're Israeli-American or whatever the case may be, Muslim-American. At the end of the day, we're all Americans. We're all from the same mud pot that we came from, whether it be wherever, Europe, Middle East, whatever, it doesn't matter. We're all Americans. And most importantly, we're all City of Folsom residents. So at the end of the day, and I agree with what the mayor said, you know, not only if you see an incident personally or witness one, certainly, you know, let our police department know, but as importantly, if someone's even on the border of that kind of mentality, pull them aside and let them know that, you know, we're going to forgive them for their intolerance, but more importantly, we're going to educate them about tolerance. Because for the same reason, they get to express their free speech. These people have the right to express whatever religion that they have or whatever faith they follow, or whatever gender they happen to be. But the intolerance is just, is just unacceptable in this, this community. And so to me, my plea this evening was, folks, this is Folsom. We don't do this, number one. Number two, look back at yourself, and if you've even remotely thought it or witnessed somebody, first of all, forgive yourself, and then go out and start teaching forgiveness as well. This is what Folsom's all about, not intolerance. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Well said, Steve.
And just to add to that, that, the night that we approved the mosque project was very enlightening in some ways and very disheartening in others. And the council made the right decision, but I, but on the, on the positive side, I think it's very, very interesting that both the Shabbat and the mosque are in the same complex, which I think that's something that we should all be proud of, because they're neighbors.
There's three religions in that complex.
So I think that's important. Otherwise, it's supposed to start running again. People, please drive more carefully. Everybody's been speeding, not just on Empire Ranch Road, and, you know, I don't know, Chief Reno, is it maybe time to do a little bit more strict enforcement out there, get people to slow down? Drive like your mother's in the backseat. Happy Valentine's Day and good night.
Could I add one thing?
Sure, sure.
I think the night that Carrie spoke on that, when they approved the mosque, is probably the best speech you ever made in Folsom.
I just, I just remember, I was mayor at that time and was calling up probably 30 to 40 speakers up to speak on that. They were mostly Muslim, and boy, those names were giving me a hard time. Those wonderful people had names that just tongue-tied me. So, so I was glad Krista was working those names much better than I would have, so. But, but again, you know, just to resonate a little bit on that is, you know, we'll, we'll provide some, some really positive efforts in that direction. I have, have no doubt this community has done that many times in the past, and, you know, we'll turn this adversity into opportunity, I'm sure of it. And then, and then lastly is, you know, just related to all the water, I have been a little scarce lately. I've been working swing shifts and midnight shifts, just to staff around the clock with some of the water going on. Hopefully, what we have coming won't be quite as bad, and we can finally settle into, to some springtime weather that's a little drier. But until then, it's, yeah, it's been, been a lot of work, but I suppose I deserved it after all those dry drought years where I wasn't doing quite as much.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes? If I might just add one item for the good of the order before you swing the gavel. You might have noticed in the audience, Riyaaz Siddique, who, whose daughter came to speak, and we have been working with Riyaaz for many, many years on the mosque, and I've come to know him quite well, so stepped out for a minute just to thank him for, for coming out this evening. And he had presented me to present to you and the whole community, but he said we didn't bring enough for everyone. These Middle Eastern pastries, which he believes are the best available in the world, that he brought back from Detroit. I said, Riyaaz, Detroit, USA? He said, yes, they have a very, very good Muslim community there because of the auto industry, and if you want these particular pastries, this is where you go to get them, no matter where you are in the world. So it's good to know that, that he is still a good friend of Folsom. He has retained his sense of humor. And so that was, that was a great little sidebar that I just thought I would share with you.
Thank you, Riyaaz, and next time, please present those to the mayor, because I don't think we'll get those out of the hands of the city manager. So with that, we will adjourn for this evening. Thank you, everyone.